This meeting, everybody. If everybody could join our 2014 Livonia Knights and Councilwoman Linda Schele at leading us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Make your way up, kiddos. Hats off, hats off. All right? Look it right here. Don't be nervous, I would be. You ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's hear it for our Livonia Knights, everybody. They did great. Hey, you got the chicken there, all right. So that, that you did great? Did that, do you feel different? You know, you guys might get discovered now because of all the people watching, especially Garrett. You might get Lamar Jackson looking at you right now.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Mr. President, are you, is that true that you're the best player on this team?
Yes.
Uh-oh. He told me that he's the highest scorer on your whole team.
What's our, what's our fast break called? Listen, so we, we have a face-off play, so all the teams that are watching us right now, they're gonna know it. But we asked the kids to say, Coach Kyle's here as well, we asked them to say, hey, pick out a cool thing. And they went six-seven, which nobody knows anything about, which we do this.
I'm well-versed.
And pickles.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I will say, the President's here talking, he's got a photo of himself in a hockey uniform right here. I don't, I don't know if the camera can get that or not.
There's more, there's some vanity there, too.
There's a, if the camera gets that, his hair looks good. No, you guys' photos are pretty cool, awesome jerseys.
No, you guys are awesome, thanks for coming out and doing this. Good tournament this weekend, and we got another one coming up in a couple of weeks, right? Right? All right. Well, with that, I'm gonna jump into the fun parts of the meeting, my, my friends. But great job on the pledge, and if you guys wanna leave, you can, if not, enjoy the meeting. Listen. Mitchell's thinking about it. All right, see ya, guys. Harp's, Harp's ride's not coming for a little bit.
Where went the audience?
All right.
Harper's stuck here.
All right, with that, um, that was our special recognition and tributes. All right. So welcome to the 2029th regular meeting of Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting, and minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting that'll be scheduled to take place on Wednesday, December 3rd. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Schele?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember Toy?
Here.
Councilmember Donovan?
Here.
Vice President Tashnik?
Here.
President McCullough?
Here. And we show all members, and Carrie, too.
I'm sorry.
It's all right, she's here.
Councilmember Bazinski?
Present.
Yeah, so we've got everybody. Welcome, Carrie. All right, I will now entertain a motion for the minutes from the regular meeting of the City Council that was held on November 5th, 2025.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I actually have two corrections to the minutes before we vote on them.
Okay.
First of all, motion number 350-25 states that I made the motion, when it was actually made by Councilmember Linda Schele and seconded by Mr. Morgan. So we need to, we need to fix that. And then, secondly, it states that President McCullough passed me the gavel at 8:58, and I passed it back at 9:02, and then he passed it back four minutes later. Actually, we did not pass it back and forth, so I think you just passed it to me, and I accepted it at 8:58, and then did return it at 9:45.
Okay, and that's it?
That is it.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So I'll be happy to motion that with those corrections made.
We have support, support. All right, I'm gonna go to council, any comments on the minutes? Anything from the audience? All right, name and address, and you have two minutes on the minutes.
Hi, my name is Catherine Rippey, and I am a retiree from the city of Livonia. And, um, the city of Livonia accepts electronic funds transfers for, um, income tax.
Ma'am, is this, this is not for the minutes, right?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're good.
Just one second.
Couple items down, I'll look at you, but audience communication's on its way. This is just for the minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, you're good. Any comments or, oh, good evening, two minutes, name and address.
Ralph McNabb, Fairway Drive, Livonia. Please consider not approving these minutes. The minutes are significantly flawed and do not represent the actual minutes, specifically the motion presented by Councilperson Schele for the Sheetz site plan. Unequivocally, what is detailed in the minutes is not what was voted on. Reviewing the videotape of the meeting shows a very cryptic, nondescript of motion, and I find it interesting that any of the council members could even be able to honestly vote on such a poorly presented motion. First, the wording in the motion does not follow the ZBA wording, and presented including a convenience window in place of a drive-through window. Second, the last sentence of the motion states "an open-ended, nonspecific set of conditions", as worded, "that are listed on 'um, original approving motion'. Does anybody know specifically or categorically which approving motion was the original one? I don't, I've looked it all over, I can't find one. And which conditions are being referenced? Third, the official minutes have been changed well beyond the actual dialogue and the motion details that were presented. Someone took it upon themselves to change the motion language from including a convenience window to including a pickup window. I've never heard that in any of your meetings. More important, the conditions loosely alluded to are miraculously spelled out in the official meeting minutes that you have. They were never presented for that vote. Do you know which conditions you voted on? Were there three?
Yeah.
There was three conditions, correct?
Yes.
No, there was 22. Fourth, the conditions provided in the official minutes, specifically conditions 1 and 12?
That's time, sir.
Were fabricated after the vote.
That's time, sir, thank you.
If you approve these minutes?
Sir, that's time, I know. Thank you. Good evening. Name and address, you got two minutes.
Nick Lamaco, 20154 Edgewood. I provided a letter to each of the council members electronically dated November 13th. I'm hoping that you'd find it reasonable to have that included as part of the record. For the benefit of the public, what my point was is that the conclusion of the November 5th meeting, a motion to rescind a prior motion which denied site plan approval to construct a gasoline station, including drive-through window, passed shortly thereafter, a new motion was made, passed by the city council, was granted site plan approval. It was alleged at this meeting that the rescinding motion and vote correctly followed Robert's Rules of Order. It didn't, inasmuch as adequate notice was not given. As such, it's my opinion that the motion to approve the petition is invalid, and that the original motion to deny the site plan approval still stands. I reached that conclusion by following Robert's rules and indicating which notice was required, by announcing an intent to make a motion at the meeting immediately preceding the meeting at which the motion is made, or by having the secretary of your body, in this case, the clerk, include the notice of the intent in the call of the meeting, which is commonly referred to as the agenda. Neither of those actions occurred. I ask that the council publicly acknowledge these oversights, stipulate that its prior motion to rescind is invalid, and declare that its original motion to deny the petition stands. Just simply put, I believe precision is critical. Minutes shouldn't be approved until the city council confers approving motion complies with Robert's Rules of Order. I think that your own study will confirm what I concluded. And also, we just heard about the conditions of site plan approval. A lot of us in, in the community still are unfamiliar with all the conditions that you're attaching to that site plan approval. So I ask that you postpone approving the minutes until such time those issues are resolved. Thanks.
Thank you. Good evening.
Greg Ralco, live in Golf Ridge Villa. What's the hurry? Can anyone explain to the residents here and watching at home why there is such a rush to finalize everything? Remember, the zoning board of approvals, of appeals gave the project three years to get off the ground. And now you just heard two compelling reasons with why everything should be actually slowed down. You've heard first, nobody knows what you approved when you approved the site plan. Further, what wasn't approved and what has been removed. For example, since all parties agreed to delete the drive-through, then anything that has to do with the drive-through operation needs to go as well, including a drive-through lane. Without site plan clarity, we risk making mistakes that we, that we can't reverse. Why, why is this critical? Well, for the simple reason that this development will change this green corner of the city forever. Secondly, you heard arguments that your recent rescinding motion and vote did not follow Robert's Rules of Order. Therefore, the motion taken to approve the site plan was actually invalid. And therefore, the original motion which denied approval of the site plan should remain in place. I'll add a third. To be fair to the residents that filed a lawsuit in Wayne County Circuit Court against the legal errors of the ZBA, we need to stop everything and pause. For example, would it be fair, much less wise, to allow a demolition team to knock down the building before the court decides? No way. That should not happen on your watch or the city's. So what's my call to action? Do not approve the minutes from the November 5th meeting. You have the power, it makes sense, and it will halt everything. For transparency's sake, a detailed site plan document first needs to be prepared for all to see and review. A committee of the whole might also make sense. A determination that, that first needs to be-
Mr. Ralco, that's time.
I'll say one last thing, the city should not give out any permits or permissions-
I can't.
-before the Wayne County Circuit Court rules.
Thank you. All right, any other audience communication? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Before we leave that, I would have a problem denying our minutes as they stand at the moment because once these minutes are approved, a lot of other people are on this, these minutes besides the Sheetz issue, and people wait for us to take action, and it would be unfair to all of them as well. And if I may, just to the city attorney, to just get a little bit of clarification, Mr. Carr, if I may, hate to put you on the spot, but it was a late day for me today, or I would've called you. But this rescinding motion question is up in the air, and, and to be fair to us and fair to, you know, the audience or whoever, and then something with the court. Do we, can you explain that to me? Because I'm a little bit unclear, and I think in the past, I've served a long time, okay? Maybe too long, it's about time to leave. But in all seriousness, I, I think we've had other lawsuits with us, and we've acted over and above a lawsuit, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, when the city has somebody suing us. I may be misspeaking, but please help me out.
Sure. So in terms of the rescinding motion, Councilmember Schele did send written notice to all, all of you prior to the motion being made, to give notice to the prevailing party to be present at the meeting and prepared to debate and vote on it. I, I think that, that, that meets the standards required by Robert's rules, but I'd certainly defer to the parliamentarian on that point if there's a difference of opinion. In terms of whether we've acted when there are pending lawsuits, we, we have had council votes on pending lawsuits, when pending lawsuits are still sort of in motion. It, it really depends on the lawsuit and the topic that, that would cause us to sort of pause there. So it, it's really sort of idiosyncratic to the lawsuit that we would make that consideration.
And, and obviously, we'll be present for that lawsuit, right?
Correct.
The city, okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, colleagues.
Anything else from council? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Schele?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Bazinski?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. The motion, are the minutes, Carrie, seven to zero? We're gonna jump right into audience communication. The council has set aside 30 minutes for public comment, for items that are not currently on the agenda. If you'd like to speak, make your way to either podium. Name, address, three minutes. Now is your time, there you go.
Okay, thank you.
So you got name, address, and you get three minutes now.
Okay, my name is Catherine Rippey, I live at 36316 St. Andrews Drive in Livonia. I am a retiree of the city of Livonia, and I wanted to bring this issue up before the council. The city of Livonia accepts electronic funds transfers for income, for the city tax, and also for water bills. I would like them to look into possibly accepting that same type of payment for retirees when they pay for their healthcare premiums. Right now, the city only accepts payments by check, and we have to submit a check in the mail to the finance department, to cash. A lot of people no longer live in the state of Michigan, and the way our mail system is, checks get lost all the time. So I would like to have that option where it can be taken out directly from our checking account.
Awesome, no, thank you for bringing that up. And normally, we will make it, we'll, we'll address that, but you came to the right place. We'll make sure that information, and then I'm sure-
Mr. Chair.
Okay.
We'll talk about it during the council communications.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Hey. Steve King, Coventry Gardens. With the recent election concluded, this council has officially entered its lame duck period. That can be good or bad. Some might point to the way the Sheetz gas station issue was handled as an example of the bad. But looking forward, I'm hopeful that these remaining weeks, council will refocus on a few important items that could still make a meaningful impact for residents. Number one, reopen the Newburgh and Silver Village Commons area. The common area, essentially the Great Room, is where residents gather, visit with friends and family, and socialize, especially as the holidays approach. Please do not buy into the false narrative that this space is unsafe to keep open. Nothing has ever happened at that area, ever. There's never been a problem. Residents should not need permission to use the heart of their own community. Restoring access is the right thing to do. Number two, another senior issue. Revisit the Silver Sneakers Medicare benefit at the rec center. Silver Sneakers is a Medicare-supported program that provides full memberships to seniors at major fitness organizations to promote health and reduce long-term health care costs. Every major chain, LA Fitness, Planet Fitness, Anytime Fitness, and others, offers full access to Silver Sneakers participants. But the Livonia, Livonia Rec Center does not. Instead, seniors are offered a limited matinee membership, which is both unusual and unfair. Why are Livonia seniors the only ones being deprived of the full benefit their Medicare already covers? Number three, pass the amended block party ordinance. This ordinance has been on the table for months. I know Sarah gave it to each and every one of you. Bring it forward and take the vote. This will help people that want to have a block party, it's common sense ordinance amendment. They won't have to sit through a meeting like November 5th, six hours, if they want to just have a block, block party. Even in a lame duck period, meaningful and positive action is still possible. I hope the council will use this time to deliver for the people who voted for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Good evening, sir.
Danny Berenson, Wayne Road, Livonia. I am here representing Deer Creek, Golf Ridge, and Willow Woods regarding the southeast corner of Eight Mile and Newburgh. We three subdivisions have asked the mayor, by way of a letter, to instruct all city departments to put everything related to this corner on hold. For example, permits, preliminary construction work, those sorts of things, until the Wayne County Court has ruled on the lawsuit from we residents. Why delay the permitting process? First, we need to allow the ruling from Wayne County Circuit Court to be issued. Secondly, this is only fair to our residents who have spent the money to file an appeal with the court on what they feel are very solid grounds against the legal miscues of the zoning board of appeals. The court should rule first. Thirdly, a delay protects all parties. If the judge rules in favor of the residents, then the delay of any work being done will help the developers to mitigate any costs incurred by starting before that ruling. Also, the owner would not have his building demolished by legal mistake. The residents have been given the rightful benefit in this manner. Finally, there is no reason to hurry on this issue. Changing this green corner of the city is a huge decision. Now is the time for the legal process to be allowed to play out. Now, addressing you. What power does the city council have to instruct the building department to put a hold on demolition of this site? Either in conjunction with the mayor or independently? Could a motion be made tonight to put all requests for permits on hold, and that such motion be taken up at the next meeting? Keep in mind, this is to protect all parties. Thank you for your time.
Good evening.
Good evening, Nick Lamaco, 20154 Edgewood. City Attorney Fisher stated at November 5th and this evening that advanced notice of intent was given by councilperson Schele to each of the other councilpersons prior to the November 5th meeting. However, such notice of intent did not occur at the previous meeting as is required by Robert's Rules of Order. How this notice was actually communicated occurred outside the light of public scrutiny. Also, a call of that meeting was not executed, which would have alerted interested parties to the city council's intent to rescind its prior vote to deny the Sheetz site plan by a simple majority vote. Absent these two options, a two-thirds vote by the city council was required to pass the motion to rescind. So Attorney Fisher, I encourage you to review the Robert's Rules of Order and the letter that I sent to the council regarding those particular provisions of Robert's rules, which make the case that I just made publicly. That motion to rescind was made in error because the procedures for notification was not made correctly according to Robert's rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Patty Rigio, Livonia, Michigan. I was looking over some historical city council meeting minutes when I, I was trying to get a feel for when the Rite Aid moved into the corner of Eaton-Newburgh, and I found a very interesting quote from our council chairman, Mr. Enger, Engerbitson, at the time. And he said to the owners at that property, he said, quote, "Please encourage those Rite Aid folks when they come in with their signed package, and to stay within the city ordinance and point out to them our ordinance restrictions for window signage. This is a wonderful entrance to the city. It is very important to us and to you that we play by the rules there and make the first impression of Livonia as wonderful and as exciting as we can." End of quote. Wow, seems like our prior leadership seemed to have a much better vision of that location than our current seated leaders. Stay within the city ordinance. A wonderful entrance to the city. Play by the rules. Make a first impression. You may have heard from many of our neighbors about your underhanded way of sneaking in a reversal at the end of the last meeting, after many of the residents had left. You breached the trust to make this decision, which represents the people that put you right there in those seats. You have heard, we have heard from neighbors in Deer Creek who are incensed, as we all are, by the votes that you took at the last meeting. This one gentleman said he is going to take an active role in trying to make a change with this. Another neighbor in our, in, in the area is moving out. They've lived in Deer Creek for 40 years. One of my neighbors has said they're selling too, before the potential Sheetz builds. They fear that their home values, values will suffer. This is the reality that you've created. Residents are so disillusioned by your actions, and the trust is gone, and soon so will be some of our residents. Finally, Councilman Tashnik mentioned that the responses that she received was 50/50. I have 400 names against, I want to see your 400 names in favor.
Greg Ralco, Golf Ridge Villa. We looked and nowhere in the ordinance or procedures does it say that fear of a lawsuit should be a standard for site plan approval. However, two councilmembers, Mr. Donovan and Ms. Tashnik, who voted no to rezoning this property last January, offered this as the only reason they voted to, to approve the site plan now. Both stated that they didn't want a gas station there on this corner, and actually preferred to stand by their original votes. However, their fear of a lawsuit from Sheetz gave them no choice but to, a vote to approve the site plan. So tonight, I would like someone to make a motion to rescind the vote taken at their last meeting that rescinded the original denial of the site plan. I think the two councilmembers would support that I just spoke of, would support such motion upon hearing the following. Recall the answer from the Sheetz representative from city council's study session when asked by councilmember Toy whether Sheetz had filed any lawsuits in any of the metro Detroit cities or jurisdictions. His answer was no. In checking to see if this was, was true, we searched the local county dockets pursuant to one of the councilmembers said about Sheetz lawsuits in Farmington Hills and Allen Park. Here's what we found. In Farmington Hills, we spoke to Gary McJen, city manager, and he told us that not Sheetz, but their developer, Skilk and Gold, filed suit against the city because they were denied a zoning request, a request for rezoning. Recall, similar to our city council's denial last January. We were also told that this seat, this suit was recently dropped, last Monday, in fact. In Allen Park, a lawsuit was filed this past July by the petitioner landowner against the Allen Park Zoning Board of Appeals when the landowner was denied a zoning variance. We bring these three facts up because the arguments to approve a site plan for fear of a Sheetz lawsuit are actually unfounded. They didn't file lawsuits, related parties might have, but these were dropped or aren't going anywhere. In light of this, and the removal of the only reason the two councilmembers voted yes on the site plan, the vote taken at the last city council meeting would have been denied by a five-to-two vote. Step back, step back and think about where we're at. You'll see the irony in all of this, and why the residents are so angry. The actions that spawn, spawned the potential for a lawsuit can be traced to the ZBA. They carelessly did it. Remember, the bodies said no to Sheetz, this body said no to Sheetz back in January by a five-to-two margin. And there was no suit, and Sheetz was told to go away.
That's time. Mr. Ralco, that's time.
Can I have one more minute?
If, if we can get a motion here? Listen, I, I'll be, I would be fine to give a motion for an extra minute, if I could have support, if not.
Support.
Can I?
I'll make the mo-
I can't make a motion.
Point order, can't make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
The other people didn't get time.
If he's asking for a minute, and he'd like to have it, I'm just putting it there. So there is a motion on the table, we do have it from Councilwoman, Councilwoman Bazinski with the support from Councilwoman Toy. Just for sake of that, let's do, madam clerk, will you take a vote on the extra minute? You can, yeah, sorry, sorry. Open up the council. If you'd like to speak.
Well, here. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll speak to this. We, this gentleman has spoke, spoken to us every single council meeting for pretty much the last year. I'm clear on his thoughts. I don't need to hear anymore on it. The vote has already been taken on Sheetz, it's a done deal. We do have to listen to our residents, and we do listen to our residents. But in this case, this is just complete rhetoric that keeps going on and on and on. So I'm not gonna be in favor of that, okay?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I have no objection going for one minute, if it's new information. We, we, Councilman Morgan's right, we have heard this, and no offense to any of you, you know, different people have made their choices in their votes for various reasons. I respect that. You know, politics is an interesting game at best, but- You know, politics is an interesting game at best, but we've got to be respectful of you as, to a point of procedures in what we do on this council for this city. And no offense, we, we have, we have heard you. Some of us agree with you, some of us disagree. And no offense, you've got a lawsuit filed. So therefore, you, you've got some strong feelings for it. Now, we are, we represent the city of Livonia. So we have to be very careful what we're treading on. And so I appreciate your comments. And Greg, you've worked very hard on this. I commend you and your team of people. They've done a fabulous job. But in all fairness, we've got to be very careful right now of the ground we're plowing on. So I just want to make that clear of where I'm coming from. And thank you.
That's why we'll take it to a vote for an extra minute. Is anybody else on council? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Sheil.
No.
Councilmember Morgan.
No.
Councilmember Toy.
Wait, what do we vote on that again?
Give him an extra minute.
Oh, yes. Sorry.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Council Vice President Taschnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye.
You have one extra minute.
Thank you. Is this, okay. But the legal miscues of the ZBA that filed actually triggered a lawsuit from your own residents and in your words, created the potential for a new lawsuit. Then members of this body, instead of admitting that the city screwed up and created the lawsuit potential, tried to pawn this onto the residents that had been fighting this development. Then you try to convince us that we're the ones that just have to accept the city's misdeeds and pay the price. And it won't work. And, and if we don't, then you, then you threaten us. You say we'll lose the imaginary lawsuit, we would have to deal with cuts in the public safety, police and fire, school funding, and even say goodbye to fall leaf pickups. In short order, the residents didn't create this problem, but in your words, we have to deal with the consequence and the cost.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Ryan Rigio. I live in Willowood Sub. And I'm here again to say that I think what you're doing is utterly wrong as far as the, as far as the city goes as the green, the zone, it puts right up against Sheetz gas station. And it, there, there's no other way to say it that you're wrong. Okay? And I, me and everybody that lives in that area does not want that Sheetz gas station there. It, it, there's so many wrongs about it, it's pathetic, especially with the water retention. Bell Creek, I'm worried about flooding is a big flood zone in that area. We've been living there for 34 years and we know there's a flood zone. We had the City Council out there because of the flood zone. And if there's any kind of spills or leaks, it's going right into Bell Creek and it's going to be disaster. And as far as Scott Morgan goes, you have to listen to the people because the people got you in that seat. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Name an address and you've got three minutes.
Hi, Trevor Wilson, 17538 Hillcrest. I've got a tone shift issue here. I'm not, I'm not, it's not about Sheetz. So a question regarding Livonia City Services. It's regarding the leaf pickup, the six-week window that, that, that's in, in play.
Yep.
I'd like to see some randomization towards it. For as long as I recall, I've been in week, I've been in, I've been in week one and this year I'm in, this year I'm in week three. So I'd like, and you know, and you know, it's a great service, but there's still leaves on our trees. So we're always in week one and we're not even, you know, it's not even a three-week spread. I'd like to see if we could get it like randomized and spread out so you're not always in week one and is, and not for you not bagging leaves at the end because there's still tons of leaves in the trees.
And usually we'll address during audio, our council comments, but you usually get two-leaf pickups, right?
There is.
Okay. Are you already done?
This year, we, this, this year it was week one and three.
Okay.
It's not even week one and four. It was not even a full three-week spread.
I'm sure some of us will address.
And we're always, we're always week one and our zone 11. So I'd like to see if we could like get spread out and sort out always week one. That's all.
Sounds good. Appreciate it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Ralph McNabb. I just want to be clear here of the message that you're sending to the homeowners. We have to abide by the ordinance and zoning. That's the residents. We have to abide by that. You sent that message clear. The ZBA sent that, the Planning Commission, and the council sent that very clear message. If you're a resident, you abide by all that stuff. If you're a contractor wanting to build here, just say lawsuit and the zoning and the ordinances go out the window. Thank you very much. You did this. ZBA done this. And the Planning Commission did this. You kicked the zoning and the ordinances right you-know-where. You said to hell with them. And now you're doing it again by furthering this. Oh, there's a lawsuit. Okay, let's change the ordinance. Let's, let's ignore the ordinance. Let's ignore the zoning. That's exactly the message that you've sent here. Do you agree? And I would ask that each of you look at the, at the video of last meeting and compare it against the minutes. Somebody fabricated a whole bunch of stuff after you took your vote. That's wrong. It's unconscionable that somebody did that. And you're letting that happen. Watch the video, read the minutes. It's all different. They changed it on you so that they could get it through. And you know the wiser. You didn't read the minutes. You haven't read the site plan. I guarantee you, did you vote to have the speakers outside or is it only for emergencies? Does anybody know?
Sir, this is your time. We can address it at the council.
Okay. I just want you to understand, none of you read that stuff because it wasn't there. Read her motion. It's this long. He, she asked him whether it was okay. None of those conditions were even mentioned. The condens, the, the conditions, but they weren't spelled out. There's 22 of them. Read number one and number 12. They're different than anything that was ever proposed at any of these meetings over the last year and a half. But I bet you didn't know that, did you? And I'll bet you didn't know that you've allowed the speakers to stay there. They can play their music. That's what you voted for. I'll bet you didn't know that, did you? Read number 12. It's there. You read it, didn't you? Because you are the one that proposed it and it was all just to get Sheetz in. It had nothing to do with the reality or the, the residents. It has everything to, to put something in that corner regardless of what it is, to ruin that corner. Thank you.
That's time, sir. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President. Jim Bigga, Livonia, Michigan. Reading Roberts Rules of Order, because I had time during audience communication, rescind, repeal, or null may be rescinded by a majority vote provided that the motion has been given at the previous meeting or in the call for this meeting, or it may be rescinded without notice by two-thirds vote or by vote of the majority of the entire membership. Call for the meeting is when the agenda is published, right? I'm just asking that general question, Mr. President, to you. I would assume it's when it's published. So that would be when the entire audience would know when the meeting for that particular night is called. So by bringing it up at the end of a meeting, nobody knew it was happening. You may have gotten an email message, but that doesn't meet what's in Roberts Rules. So therefore, in my humble opinion, the whole idea of the rescission was brought up improperly and needs to be readdressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. This one's good. Name an, just name in your city.
Hi, my name is Mason Missigian. I live at 8416 Houghton. My statement is not about the Sheetz gas station. I would like the council to please consider lowering the cost of the Rec Center daily pass and annual pass. Thank you for your consideration.
Nice job, Moose. Are they, are they too high? We got to bring them down a little bit? All right. Good evening. Name an address and you've got three minutes.
Danielle, Livonia. You want my, like, street address?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Danielle Cato and I am a member of Protective Parents Michigan. November is Family Court Awareness Month and we would like to help raise awareness of the need to prioritize child safety and family court and custody decisions. One in three Michigan families are directly impacted by domestic violence, but abuse also affects each one of us in our communities. Without proper training for our family courts on domestic violence, children continue to be exposed to abuse and families need more social support, putting an extra strain on local services like shelters, counseling, and child protective services. Post-separation abuse in family courts puts the children in harm's way because abusive parents are more likely to seek sole custody and are successful 70% of the time. Tragically, abuse is often not understood or believed by the courts and many children are ordered into unsupervised contact with the abusive parents. These statistics show why family court reform is needed. Up to 60% of perpetrators who abuse their spouse will abuse their child. Adverse childhood experiences such as abuse negatively impact a child's development, their relationships, and their mental and physical health. Most child abuse is perpetrated in the family by a parent. And one child dies every six days amid custody fights and family court cases. Since 2008, 39 Michigan children have been murdered during divorce or custody battles. One of these children was Rowan Mori Poles of Caledonia, Michigan, who was not returned to his mother at the end of his father's parenting time and was later found to be a victim of murder-suicide. Rowan's mom had been unable to have an Amber Alert issued despite appealing to police and the family court judge. A new bill that has passed the Michigan House and is being considered by the Senate is Rowan's Act. This would allow state police to issue an Amber Alert more quickly when a child is considered to be in danger. We are also trying to establish Caden's Law in Michigan to prevent future tragedies. Caden's Law is focused on prioritizing child protection over parental rights. Caden's Law would require training for judges about all types of abuse, including psychological abuse, financial abuse, and coercive control. And judges would need to consider past history of domestic violence when making custody decisions. Our children's lives are literally dependent on the courts becoming educated on these issues. We hope that the city of Livonia will consider proclaiming November as Family Court Awareness Month next year. If anyone would like to support Caden's Law, please contact your state representative. To support Rowan's Act, please contact your state senator. If you or someone you know is struggling to protect children in family court, please connect with Protective Parents Michigan on Facebook or therowanproject.org on their website.
Awesome. Thank you so much. That's awesome. With that, I'm going to go to council. Council, any announcements? Councilman Donavich?
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate it, sir. Excuse me. I'd like to move to schedule a closed committee of the whole to discuss pending litigation related to Belmont Properties LLC in the city of Livonia.
Okay. Any comments from council? Any comments from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Sheil.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Vice President Taschnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye.
And the motion carries seven to zero. The floor is still yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next, I would like to say great job to the senior center staff, Carl and Carrie, and everyone at the senior center. I'd like to say great job to Mr. Davis, our Parks and Recreation Director that we're very fortunate to have, and his entire team at Parks and Rec. They crushed it. They did a fabulous job with the new senior center. That was just a really great project. I'd like to thank the, the federal elected officials and members, members of Congress that helped allocate dollars to the city of Livonia, our state representatives and our county officials, the county executive, Warren Evans, and all their teams and people that made this possible. It was beautiful. We all were there and got to see the rip and cutting and, and check that all out and it was beautiful to see that. Our residents, our seniors deserve a new senior center. The old one has been around a long time now and it's, and it's falling disrepair. And for people that don't know, our senior center was primarily funded through the federal government, the state, county dollars. They partnered with the city of Livonia. They wanted to fund a senior-type project, so those dollars primarily came from those ARPA, American Rescue Plan dollars. And it was funny on this council, you know, over the last few years, we've been working on that and looking at the plans and reviewing with Councilwoman Toy and, and all the different architects and people that had their hands in it. And to see it done, right? And we talk about things on paper and we look at hundreds of pages of packets and then you get to walk into the actual building and see it done. So just great work to everybody and to those seniors. I think it's going to be something that will serve our seniors of today and our seniors of tomorrow, well into the future. So sorry, I had to give my colleague a little, little nudge.
No, that's all right. I'm glad I lived this long.
She always makes fun of me because my, she makes fun of me because my beard still doesn't connect. I like to make fun of her from time to time, too. But it was just really great work. So with that being said, Mr. President, you know, we, we had a lot of discussion over, over facilities over the summertime and we look at that old courthouse that's sitting vacant for, I think the new courthouse opened in 2010, maybe, give or take, and it's been sitting there collecting dust and, and just a really bad building. And now, you know, throughout the summer, we heard residents talking about likely really great points, why are these buildings still standing? And I ask myself that question now when looking at the old senior center. So the, the senior center is no longer going to be open and I think we as a city should avoid the same situation happening where 10, 15 years from now, this old building is still sitting there collecting dust, wasting power, wasting city taxpayer dollars. We've got to fund it. We've got to heat it, cool it, take care of it. And I think that would be, it'd be repeating bad things from the past that we shouldn't be doing. Keeping buildings, large buildings, large vacant buildings does not help the taxpayer at all. So with that being said, Mr. President, I'd like to ask for a report and recommendation from the administration for the demolition of the old Livonia Civic Park Senior Center and the old courthouse.
Support.
And basically what I'm asking for the audience is, I'd like the administration to go out and start collecting recommendations and what is going to cost the city to demo these buildings, do the, the traditional paperwork. So if that has support amongst the council, the administration will start that process and then they will come back to the City Council whenever they can, whenever that process, how it works out. And they will give us their report and recommendation. They may say, no, we don't want to demo these buildings. We want to keep them. Or they will say, yes, we do want to demo these buildings. This is how much it's going to cost us and this is where the money's going to come from. Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, I appreciate your time.
Do we need a vote on, do we want to vote on that? Yes. Okay. Council, any comments, concerns? Audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Sheil.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Vice President Taschnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye.
And the item carries seven to zero. No, the way you finished it was like you were just moving on to something else. I'm like, I think we got to vote, man. Don't throw me off.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, what are we under? Are we still under?
Yeah.
Comments?
Yeah, you can talk.
Okay. Oh, thanks.
The floor is yours if you want it.
Okay.
Take it.
No, I just want to commend the one woman that just got up shortly in talking about basically a very near and dear to my heart. In fact, Senator Cassis, myself, when we were in the Senate, had sponsored the Amber Alert. That was our bill. And it certainly needs some nuance to it, as the woman pointed out, because abuse is just horrible.[1717.03] And even in the state, and even, you know, anywhere, I don't wanna get overly crazy on it, but it is crazy. I mean, you know, when people are having problems, unfortunately, those vulnerable children are the ones sometimes that bear the brunt of that. And it knows no socioeconomic or no color or any of the rest. So, I commend you greatly for that, and if there's any way I can help, now that I'm gonna have a little bit more time in my life, I hope, I would be more than happy to help. And I just, I just really commend them. I just wanna say something about block parties because after I've sat in this council numerous times, there always has been brought up block parties. And there's a good reason, though, in many ways, just think of this, people and folks, block parties, when they come to us, they have to outline where they're coming, what they're doing, and what streets are closing down. That involves the police and the fire department and folks like that. So, in a way, I understand what you're saying, but we're here no matter what time we work till and no matter how many people speak, and I think our president's been very clear and hopeful on that. And so, there is good reason for block parties to come to us. I know it sounds a little minute, like craft shows do as well, but there's a purpose for them, if that helps anyone at all. And I would like to commend all those involved in our new center, especially Rob Donovan. He attended meetings I couldn't get out during the day because of various reasons and vice versa, but he did a fabulous job on that, and so did our mayor and Hertie, we don't wanna forget them. Mayor Brosnan brought a lot of those folks together from the state and the federal. That's a trick, that's a hat-trick, quite frankly, to use an old hockey term. But, in all honesty, that is really something, to be able to get those dollars, and some of those people had to call in some favors, if you will, up at that level, and make some promises as far as the money being spent, and I think it's well-spent, everyone, seriously, if you get a chance, go on over there, I know they were open on Saturday for tours, but you gotta look at it, it's beautiful, and they've done a beautiful job. Is there some things that can be improved here and there? Yeah, but we went to great pains to ask folks what they wanted, how they wanted it, and it's been really followed, and without taxpayer dollar. So, I commend our city leaders and our mayor and everyone else that was involved in it. And again, with Rob did a fabulous job on that, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Vice President?
Mr. President, thank you. I just wanted to mention, I know one of the residents brought up silver sneakers, it is on our agenda tonight, it's number six on the study, so we will be discussing that in a little while. And then, I know we had our Livonia retiree that came up and asked about the possibility of EFT for the pension, and I guess, maybe Mrs. Sheil, you would know better, but could that go through the treasurer's office? Through the chair, Mrs. Sheil, she was our former treasurer.
Through the finance.
Finance department, okay, so that would, so could we ask for some sort of recommendation from finance regarding EFT payments for the retiree, just to see if that's a possibility?
Sure.
Just to interject, I think it's for healthcare only, is that correct? Just it's for healthcare, I believe.
Just for healthcare, yeah, yeah.
Do you want a formal resolution?
We could just find out first if that's a possibility and then-
Yeah.
Yeah, just a report and recommendation, maybe, from finance, just to find out, and then we could bring that up.
Sounds good.
Motion it at the next meeting, maybe? Thank you.
Councilwoman Budzinski?
Just to follow the trend, I would say, in regards of randomization of leaf pickup, if we could also get the administration to just share their philosophy on designating the order that the city, you know, has agreed. I understand it's a system, but, you know, if maybe we can make it, you know, make adjustments to help different parts of our community at different years. Obviously, weather never helps, you know, a long summer is nice until the leaves stick to the trees. And I'll just also say, you know, my regular coffee hour spiel, I thank you Schoolcraft College, Matt Wilson, for joining on Saturday to talk about all the really amazing things that are happening over at, you know, Hagerty and Seven Mile. Schoolcraft is a really amazing amenity for our community. For those of you who don't know, community college is free for seniors in the state of Michigan, and then, once you're over 25, if you don't have a college degree, you can go to Schoolcraft for free as well. So, one, that's a great opportunity, they have lots of continuing education programs, they've got an amazing restaurant and culinary program, the new Nino Savagio, the Trinity Sports Dome, they're, uh, it's not called a gym, but it's their recreation center on campus, is actually open to the public as well, so if you didn't know that. Just one of the many fun things we learned about what's available over at Schoolcraft. So if you haven't checked it out lately, you know, it's radically different than it was a decade ago in all the best ways. So, thank you to Schoolcraft for always being a great community partner and for coming out to my coffee hour.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Moore? How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Counsel, I can address the leaf pickup issue. We set the program in July, we start working on that. Basically, we start looking at areas that have lots of trees in them. We have areas that technically, we start very first, sections four, five, and six, don't have a lot of street trees, the trees that they have are younger, smaller trees. The west side of section 18, so that's the part that's west of I-275 and east of Hagerty, all small trees. Section 34 is very last because there's a lot of big trees, lots of leaves coming down. Part of the problem this year was, as Councilperson Budzinski said, the trees held leaves late and long. We thought maybe they'd start falling because it was so dry, and then they didn't. And as I look out in my office every day, there's a group of oak trees right across I-96 that are gonna have leaves on them until spring. Moving the crews around gets really difficult, trying to get the schedule set, because when we print the schedule and get it to the printer, it's August. We've gotta plan this program out months ahead of when it's actually happening, and I understand that there's a lot of angst and grief over leaves coming down or not coming down, but trying to get the program set and then waiting for leaves to fall gets really difficult. So, I hope that helps a little bit.
Yeah, I'm gonna open it up, Vice Presidents.
Mr. Moore, thank you for that, I appreciate that. Did you forget to call Mother Nature? No.
Yeah, no, yeah, this year.
Question for you, so let's say I live in a street where my leaf pickup has already happened, we can still do the brown bags?
Correct. You can do the brown leaf bags, that program runs until the trash day of the second week of December. I mulch my leaves, I highly recommend mulching leaves, it's good for everything. I do not use the leaf pickup program, I get more and more leaves every year, and I just get them up on the grass and I mulch them.
Thank you.
Floor is yours.
Thanks, Mr. President, I appreciate it. Mr. Moore, thanks for being here, I know this is kinda impromptu, so you were not expecting this. Do you know off the top of your head how much the city spends on leaf pickup every year?
I know that we, the leaf pickup program that gets billed out to, it was GFL, now priorities about $600,000 to get the leaves hauled out, that does not include equipment, our labor costs, and those associated things.
I always thought it was a few million bucks when you factored in all the manpower and the revenues and just all the expenses, excuse me, that we have to factor in. So, I know it costs the city taxpayers a lot of money, I think it's a great resource that we have, not many cities have it, and like Council Vice President Tashnik said, we can't control Mother Nature. So, I know it's, I've talked to Don Roroff and some of the guys in the garage about fixing those trucks and how much labor it takes to put those big boxes together and the retrofitting, and then they've also explained to me that they have to start planning for snow plowing, they have to start converting those trucks over because those are our snowplow trucks, they have to have salt boxes on them and blades on them and all sorts of different things. So, I understand moving the, my tree's still holding a lot of leaves actually in the backyard, and I just already kinda planned that I'm gonna have to bag those up. So, I know the scheduling's always tough, but just, you know, great job to you and the DPW crew and all those people that drive around sucking up all those leaves that sometimes lasts into the winter time when it starts snowing, so thank you for all what you do.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Anything else from council? All right, I'm gonna, I just got a couple, I was gonna say, Mason, that was really, it takes a lot of courage to go up to a podium and ask a question in front of all these scary people, I wanna commend you for doing that. And we do have the mayor in the audience, too, so we might be able to talk about getting those rates down. Did you have a, did you have a number in mind? You probably would like it to be free or something like that, maybe a little bit? No, but I wanted to give you kudos because it does, it takes a lot of courage to do what you did, and it's commendable, so nice job, buddy. All right. All right. We're gonna move on to reports from the mayor and other city officials. I'm going to start with, we have five items from communication received from the city clerk. A is communication received from the office of the city clerk dated October 21st, 2025, forwarding the 2025 tax rate from the city of Livonia regarding the collection of the district's taxes. B is, again, from the city clerk, from June 24th, forwarding the 2025 tax rate request from the Wayne County Zoological Authority. These are all the fun ones, you can kinda see where we pay taxes and where all these other taxes come from. C is communication received from the office of the clerks dated June 5th. This one is coming from the charter county of Wayne. D, again, from the city clerk, received on June 12th, is our Huron-Clinton Metropolitan Authority. E is from July 15th, is for our Wayne County Art Institute Authority. And F, was received on June 23rd, comes from LPS, our Livonia Public Schools School District. Those are all receiving files, and mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCullough, and thank you all for your kind remarks regarding our Livonia Senior Wellness Center and its opening, and it's actually that that I wanna talk to you about. You know, we've spent years working together to build this project and to bring it to our residents, so I think it behooves us to just take a couple more minutes to make sure that we do say thank you to all the right people, because as many of you noted, this is a big, huge, heavy lift, one that's been going on for quite some time now. You know, this 30,000 square foot facility, in my mind, represents not just bricks and mortar and getting all of that put together, it really recognizes a collective dream in our community. And I think one of you mentioned that it was directly responsive to those needs that seniors put first, driven by hundreds of surveys, results that were gathered from our seniors, asking them what they would like to see if they had a chance to have a new facility. And literally, day in and day out, as we worked on this project, we went through that list time and time again, checking it all off to make sure that we had gotten it all right. You know, when we first started this project, I don't think there was anybody here, myself included, that believed that we would have raised over $20 million to fund this project, this $29 million project, as Councilwoman Toy indicated, comes to us as a result of not having to ask our taxpayers for any increase. And it's a free service to our seniors. They pay if they're gonna be doing any additional programming, but for the most part, the chance to go in and benefit from the space and the community gatherings and the congregant meal programs and so many of our tax service programs and our health screenings, all of that is free to our seniors. Why is that important in Livonia? And quite honestly, why is it more important in Livonia than maybe it is in other communities in this area? And the answer is really simple, it's that we have the largest senior population of any city in Wayne County. And I'm not talking by just a little bit, we have a lot more seniors. And we learned that, and that point got hammered home to us during COVID, if you all remember, which is exactly why this project is such a special one. Because in my mind, it goes right at addressing a problem that COVID created. COVID created a problem primarily for seniors, the people impacted most by that deadly pandemic were our senior citizens. Our people in Livonia suffered more than a whole host of other communities in Wayne County. You may recall, we had a death rate that was close to per capita, what they were experiencing in New York. So the fact that we were now able to bring a wellness center to the population most affected by COVID, using the dollars that came out of COVID, that American Rescue Plan money, just seems like such a phenomenal story for legislators to be able to tell. And I think it's a big part of how we were so successful, to Councilwoman Toy's point, in capturing that money. Whether we looked at capturing $8 million from the county, $4.5 million from the state in being a line item in the state budget for the first time in our city's history, whether it was $1.5 million from Congresswoman Talib, whether it was $3 million from Congresswoman Haley Stevens, and then we had our own American Rescue Plan money put into that, we really made that money work where it mattered the most. We had a huge turnout on Saturday, I know a number of you were there at the open house, and well over 1,000 seniors passed through the facility, and they are excited, they're really happy, they were already engaged, I think two puzzles are finished already, the puzzle table was a hot unit, and all the time and attention that went into super small details. And I'm just gonna give you one, because this is as big as building a house, you know, and as intimate as building a house, when you know every piece of it, the way that people within our city do. That puzzle table has two chairs around it that have arms on it, because sometimes people need to push themselves up and off a chair, two chairs that don't have arms on it, cuz sometimes people just wanna slide off the side of the chair to get out of it. Plenty of space for people to walk around, chairs on wheels, so that you can slide around the table. And all of this was done specifically with an understanding of just one thing, what did people want in a puzzle table? So you can only imagine, if we spent that much time learning what they wanted in a puzzle table, how much detail went into the rest of the facility. And so much of that credit goes to our Livonia Senior Center staff. They are the listeners, they are the boots on the ground, they are the people that are there day in and day out, and under the direction of Ted Davis, I think they have done an absolutely fantastic job of bringing seniors, those programs, the facility, that's really gonna make life easier and better for them. So, super excited if you have, and I know all of you have been over to see it, whether it was at the open house or whether it was at the ribbon cutting the other day, but we do, we expect that a lot more of our seniors are gonna be taking advantage of the space. We also expect, and we've built the space to grow and accommodate more seniors, because now, attached to the rec center, the expectation is that perhaps seniors that weren't using the center before, that are using the rec center, are now gonna find their way over to the senior center, and vice versa. Connecting the senior center to the rec center seems like a really great draw to increase membership in our recreation center as well. So, super excited about the project, and in addition to that project, I think sometimes what goes unnoticed is the time that's going into improving the rec center itself. So, not a project that is just about seniors, but if you came up to the front of the building from the rec center side, you probably noticed the new splash pad, we haven't yet done the ribbon cutting on that, we're gonna wait for a little bit better weather for that one. You probably noticed the new playground, again, we're gonna wait for a little bit better weather to take on the ribbon cutting around that one. And then we have the whole interior reconstruction. So our 20-year-old Livonia Senior, or Livonia Rec Center is getting a facelift as well. And again, that's an area where we have listened to the people that use that center, and I think some of the things that you're seeing built out there are gonna prove to be a direct reflection of what it is that they wanna see in enhancements in the rec center. So, I wanna thank you all as well for your partnership. This doesn't happen because all of a sudden, American Rescue Plan money has fallen off of trees, it happens because people believe in a vision, and all of you believed in this vision, you believed in this opportunity, in particular to Councilwoman Toy and Councilman Donovan, who stood as your liaisons with our administration in making this project happen. They kept all of you really well apprised of where the project was, and I wanna thank them for that. Councilman Donovan, I appreciate the report and recommendation request on demolition, we're maybe a couple steps ahead of you on this already, because we've already asked ourselves that question, how do we make sure that, you know, we take down a building that we're no longer using? Clearly, it does not have a useful life, if it did, we would have renovated it for a senior center. So, we'll be happy to get you that report, you know, as soon as we get the information in as well. And I wanna thank you for the time that you gave Doug Moore on the leaf pickup question today. And I asked Doug to come up and talk to you for just a minute and directly answer your questions related to that. As you see, it is a program and a project that is planned really far in advance, long before we know how many leaves are gonna remain hanging on to those trees. So, it's a project that only works when you've got people like Doug Moore who understand it and are really, really good at the job they do. So, for those of you who took a moment to commend Doug for the job he does, I appreciate that, it always helps when our staff feels valued. So I wanna take this opportunity as well to thank you, Doug, for the fantastic work that you do in bringing this service to our residents. It is a unique service, many of you have pointed that out already, not every city has this, and it is something that perhaps we don't recognize as unique in Livonia because we've always had it. But the fact of the matter is, it is a very valued service and one that we appreciate, not only Doug's leadership around, but everybody's time in implementing. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. All right. We're gonna move right into the consent agenda. Items one through 18 on the consent agenda will be voted on as one item. These items were previously discussed at the study meeting that took place on November 5th, 2025, and determined to be non-controversial.
Sub-
Support.
You got the makers, everybody good over there? All right, see the nods? Any comments for council? Anything from the audience? Mr. King, you name and address, you got two minutes.
Steve King, Coventry Gardens, just wanted to mention something, Rob put that motion forward and you didn't ask for audience communication, I don't believe on that, did you?
Yes, you did.
You did ask, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Okay. I'll get that on the next round. Number nine on the consent agenda- Number nine on the consent agenda, it says, "Request for Authorization to Purchase 12 Pair of Soccer Goal Nets for $44,000." Is that correct? Is that the amount? I don't think that's correct. You're not purchasing nets. You're purchasing soccer goals, I believe. Isn't that correct?
It says, "Per pair of soccer goal nets."
Yeah, but I, watching the last meeting, aren't you replacing the actual goals?
I thought so.
Yeah. So shouldn't that be adjusted? There's a difference, there's a soccer goal, which is an aluminum welded structure, and then you put a net over it. Okay, the soccer goals that you're spending $44,000, my nephew, he went crazy after he watched the meeting. He's been in soccer his whole life as well as I have. And he says, "I can get those goals for 600 bucks. You're paying 1,200 for them." The life expand, they're like 50-year goals. Why are we replacing all these goals? They do need the nets replaced, but I don't believe that's the cost of the nets. They may need the weights, the clips, the other things. So when something like this comes forward, is that because our budget process that starts and ends December 1st, is it use it or lose it? We have to spend this money? Is that why we're spending it? Or I don't know if that's a part of the budget process. But those goals don't need to be replaced, the nets do. Additionally, I don't think he knew of all the parks that were being replaced. Are some of these goals being replaced? There are premier soccer clubs that use our fields. They charge thousands of dollars for their kids to play. So they can replace their own nets. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Scheel.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye.
And the consent agenda passes seven to zero. And we're going to jump right into unfinished business, starting with item 19, is Committee of the Whole meeting. There was two of them that took place on November 5th, 2025. I am not as efficient as Councilman Donavick, so this will be very quick. And these were pretty quick meetings anyway. So we had, on November 5th upstairs, we had, the first item was the subject matter of an investigation into city departments and their procedures as it relates to the city charter. The committee meeting commenced at 6:02. The item was introduced by myself and opened up for the floor of council. Councilmember Linda Scheel brought up the items from the past meeting on May 19th, 2025. Councilmember Toy offered a motion to have a closed Committee of the Whole meeting. And right now, the committee does recommend that the item stays in committee. And there was also a recommendation for law to draft a resolution to put subject matter into a closed Committee of the Whole session. So council, I'm going to open it up to you guys for action. Do you want, do you want to proceed with that motion? If you do, just have-
Proceed with what motion? Can you clarify exactly?
So it says, "Councilwoman Toy, during that committee meeting, offered a motion in a meeting that the votes are not able to be taken." So we have to formally do it here. If you would like that to be placed, then you'd have to make the motion at the voting meeting, which is right now.
Can we make a motion to close this and end that investigation?
To close the meeting and put it out of committee?
Yes.
Okay. So, does he have support?
I'll support him for sake of discussion.
So just to say, Councilman Morgan wants to remove it from Committee of the Whole. So that is the motion that's up there. He has support. Any talking?
I'll speak on this. I mean, with the motion on the floor, we've had a couple meetings on this. I generally summarize our meetings. And those meetings, I couldn't even figure out how to summarize them. So if I don't have, if this is the motion on the floor, I am supportive because I have personally been uncertain about what the topic is in the meeting. And then it was discussed in the meeting to go to a closed meeting to discuss in more detail about this. If this is the motion on the floor, though, I will support it.
Yep.
So the reason I'm bringing this up is because there's really nothing there. We looked into whatever we had to look into and this is a dead end. And I just want to bring it out of committee and close that investigation unless somebody has any other reason why we should continue this. And if so, please bring it forward because I'd be interested in hearing exactly what it is.
To the president, point of order. Can I get a clarification on the motion? So just to clarify, the motion is a no further action of this committee item?
Yep.
No further action from this committee item, and it would be removed from Committee of the Whole.
Great. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Chair, I got to tell you, I misunderstood. I thought we were putting the subject matter into committee in the hall and then to report it out. I'm sorry. That's what I thought you were doing. But obviously, I'm wrong. So-
It's the motion on the-
I'm going to withdraw. I'm going to withdraw that because there was other subject matters that were brought up in that last meeting, if I was correct. It involved our office as far as staffing and various things.
That was a separate item.
It's a separate meeting? I thought that was the same one.
No, it's a separate item coming up next.
See, that's what happens when you get old.
So do you want to withdraw your support on that?
Yeah, let me withdraw because I'm not real sure where we're going.
Mr. Chair, I'll be happy to support.
Okay.
Okay.
So-
This for no further action.
For no further action, yes.
All right.
Mr. President, on the subject matter of investigation of city departments and procedures as it relates to the city charter, the motion on the floor is for no further action on this particular item.
And removal from Committee of the Whole. It'll be closed.
And removal.
Just to clarify.
Yeah, that's what it was.
All right. Counsel, any other comments, questions, concerns? Audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Scheel.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye.
And the motion carries seven to zero. The second item of the day was the subject matter of council office staffing and salaries. I'm going to be very brief. Again, this took place on November 5th. This item showed commencement around 6:35 because we were packaging two of them. This, the overview on this one is, is we do have a full-time member of staff that works for the city council. And as obviously, in any business or profession, you look at process and adequate staffing levels and the changing of the markets and stuff like that. So this is just an overall item that has been ongoing. We actually just had a meeting on it today. And the recommendation is just for this one was to keep it in committee, and it's going to stay there. So I'll open up the council.
Thanks, Mr. President. I want to just thank you for your leadership on this role, Mr. President. We are very fortunate, the council office, we're seven of us, and we have one full-time staffer, our council program manager. And that person, which you're seeing to my left, Mrs. Cash, which does a very good job in our council office. And all the time, this, our council manager is herding cats, right? We're all contacting the council manager, asking for notes and minutes and all sorts of things all the time because naturally, we get calls from residents and petitioners. And it's hard with your full-time job and family, as everyone up here has, trying to manage all those things. And if it wasn't for our council manager, we would not be able to do our job efficiently, and that's to serve the residents. And thank you to our council manager for doing that, our president for advocating behalf of the council office. The council manager speaks essentially on our behalf. And the council manager has to reach out to department heads and various departmental staff. And when the council manager is doing that, she's doing that on the behalf of the council members, trying to serve you, the residents. So I just want to appreciate her and our council manager and our council president working on that. I know there's still more information. And there's, there was a meeting tonight that you led, and there was some good, good work being done there and some forward progress with our HR director, who does a fabulous job, Mrs. Leibel. So thanks to her fast thinking and your fast thinking there, and looking forward to this being figured out. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yes.
To that, this job used to be done by three different people in the council office, two full-time and a part-time. I think that was the second round when I, when I took a council seat. And since then, yeah, we've gotten a little bit slower in the advent of computers, which you all know about. And so subsequently, that's helped a great deal, obviously, but there is so many questions that come before that office. There's seven crazy people that serve on this council, sometimes crazier than others.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Who's crazy?
That's being nice.
Six. Sorry, sorry, six. And so subsequently, this person, Sarah, as you pointed out, has done a fabulous job with that. And it's, it's a balancing act when you work with seven different folks, as well as the general public calling. And some of these issues, as we could see tonight, are a little bit more contentious than others. So hats off and half off to you, as well as Councilman Diamondick said, with your, you know, your pushiness. How's that?
Appreciate it.
Certainly.
Thank you. All right. We're going to jump right into new business, starting with item 20, is a request to approve an additional expenditure from the, this comes to us from the engineering division for work to acquire right-of-way easements for Newburgh Road reconstruction projects from Ann Arbor Trail to Plymouth Road in the amount of $9,235 to OHM advisors from budgeted funds. Counsel.
So moved.
Support.
I'm going to go to, Mr. Lear, you just want to give a quick overview on it?
Sure. So in the design of the project to reconstruct Newburgh Road from Ann Arbor Trail to Plymouth Road, we ran into some issues with getting the county parks and the county in general to sign off on right-of-way acquisitions that were needed for grading and some construction work. So they came close to meeting the original estimate. They just ended up $9,235 over for the extra efforts.
We got it. I appreciate that. Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Scheel.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye.
And item 20 passes seven to zero. We're going to move on to item 21, is a request to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the Michigan Department of Transportation and the city of Livonia. Comes to us-
So moved. Sorry, I thought you were done.
I'm going to go to you in a minute, but I'm only on my second sentence. Come on. Engineering Division, in reference to the Newburgh Road reconstruction project, Ann Arbor Trail to Plymouth Road, M.DOT Contract 25-5520, with a proposed city's participation to be estimated at $871,018. Counsel. Laura, I need you there.
So moved. God, sorry.
All right. Mr. Lear, the same stuff as the other one, a little different on this one?
No, it's pretty much pertaining to the same project. This is just the agreement that we have to do with M.DOT. And because of their timelines, we have to get this back to them within 30 days. They're planning on bidding the project out first week in December, and we'll know final costs at that point. The $871,000 does include money that we'll be getting back from Wayne County for their portions for the traffic signals under their jurisdiction as well.
Awesome. Appreciate that. Any comments from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Scheel.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye.
Item 21 passes seven to zero. Item 22 is a request to accept stormwater facilities maintenance agreement, again from the engineering division, in reference to Livonia Storage LLC, in conjunction with the construction of a storm drain system that provides adequate drainage at 11801 Sears Drive. Counsel.
So moved.
Support.
All right. And Mr. Lear, this is, not to downplay, but this is just a standard receiving files.
It's a formality that just allows us to clean and bill the owner of the property
Makes your life a little easier.
if they fail to do their stormwater management.
All right. Audience, any communication on this? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Scheel.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick. Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye.
Item 22 carries seven to zero. We're going to move on to 23, is a request to amend council resolution 119-25, comes to us from the engineering division, in reference to Joe Vertunno Construction Corporation, for a corrected account number for the Newburgh Road sidewalk extension project.
Mr. President, I'm offering approving.
Support.
All right. And then just reading this, this seems just to be a minor grammatical error. We're just cleaning it up per the resolution.
There was just a missed council, or a account number for the billing.
We'll blame it on Mark.
There you go. We'll blame it on this.
No, they're a great company. Any concerns, comments from counsel? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Scheel.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
President McCullough.